In Lock Haven, the expectation that what Monroe's doing is going to be bigger than the duck was, because he will basically light up the entire grounds at the Hermitage. But, and the dates will begin this fall into January, so it's going to add lights at a time with, during the holidays and pre-holiday season. I had met with the Hermitage and they're going to need some issues of support, some police support, barricades, traffic officers. They'll be open four nights a week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and it looks like Sunday, November through January. There's also some discussion of temporary signage on Hampton Boulevard. This has only happened, I think, once before in Nashville for this particular artist. And, Rick, I'm going to leave this upfront, so people can look through it to see what kind of lights Monroe does. If it's possible, who, I think, we need to have some interface with them, with the administration, and who can we have contact with them? I'm not sure who you would use.
Winter.
Winter? All right. If Winter can handle that. With traffic control, barricades, signage, so, and so they do expect quite an influx of people into the, into the Lock Haven neighborhood. There is parking off-site and buses ferrying people in. So, I think the city could really do well with this, what the Hermitage is doing. Also, recently, I was in Lexington, Virginia, and Craft Beer Magazine did a great job about Smart Mouth, about O'Connor, and about also our marketing of a certain west coast brewery. And what a great job the city has done with that. But I brought the magazine, I'll also put that out there. It's nice to see something about Norfolk, three and a half hours away, on the western side of the state. With regard to the new hotel and conference center, I've noticed that on Plume Street, it's a solid, the boards are solid. I've never seen that before on a construction site. Have you noticed those, Paul?
Yeah, I think, in fact, I think you have.
Go ahead. I mean, I hadn't seen it before.
They're going to do a very artful design on it to actually, to talk about the hotel conference center. It's not just going to be plain like that, but they're working on a very tight site, and they're trying to shield everything that's going on behind it with that wooden.
Well, the suggestion has been, is that since it is boarded that way, is to put a camera on top of Town Bank Building. That way, people can monitor the progress of that. It's not my idea, it's an idea that has been presented from visiting Norfolk, and maybe, I think, the DNC, but it's a great idea, some kind of crane cam.
Old Dominion.
Looking down into the site, you can follow the construction as it goes along. Something to think about. Also, at some point, Marcus, with regard to Mr. Martin's consulting work, if, I have never finished my discussion with him, I'd like to know where we're going with that. If you can give me a briefing at some point, have Sabrina explain that to me, because I have not heard what the end product of that is going to be. And with, also, you know, if there's going to be funds for the launch of Waterside in the main, we need to discuss where those funds are going for marketing. And I think, also, one last thing, Paul, and for everyone, there will be a, for Officer Jones, there is a soccer tournament this Saturday at Powhatan. Funds are being raised for the family. Newport News PD will be there, Hampton PD and Fire will be there, Virginia Beach PD. It's a tournament that will last the entire day. And, W T shirts sold, proceeds will go to the family, part of the concession will go to the family. Powhatan is donating to the family. So, it's just something that, if you have an opportunity to drop by, that perhaps it would be good to have people show up.
What age? Are you playing?
I'm playing.
What time?
Whenever Norfolk PD plays. And yeah, that's all I had, and I appreciate it. You can get them, get back with you, that's all. Thanks, Paul.
Mr. Rick.
Yeah. A couple of things. I got a call, the second time I got a call from Donna Alessandra, she's a woman who's been trying to sell hot dogs in Norfolk for, I don't know, a long time, and she's just having a problem with being successful. And I'll get you some information on her. Now, this other item could be, could be a really, really a stretch, and I guess this could be directed to the attorney. I'm very happy for Buddy Gaddums and, you know, all of his success, but when he was going to do that big site across from the federal building, we closed York Street. Now, if he sold that money, sold that property to the federal government, and he sold our piece, which is about a half a block, and I think he needs to pay us for that.
He didn't sell it, it was taken from him.
Okay, but they give.
The government took the whole thing.
Yeah, but they didn't get the money for it.
There was an appraisal made, I don't, that was the subject of, when we, I've had the same kind of issue in my mind, but since the federal government took it, I'm not sure. We actually closed it, so he could consolidate the properties.
Right.
I don't know what, I don't know that he paid us for any of it, but the fact that the federal government took it has always been a question in my mind, as to whether or not we could make some claim to it. Why don't we let the attorney speak?
Thank you, that's all I have.
One thing I have, Marcus, I guess, like, this Terry and I, and the mayor got this letter, the Junior League about the Taylor Widow House, and I would hope we could work with them, because they're ready to, they need a long-term lease, so they can get tax credits and restore the house, and that's something we need to stay on top of. It's a real asset, so can we put somebody on that to be sure we?
And the last time I was in the house, it was pretty sorry shape.
Well, they, they committed to, we have, they need a lease to do it, so let's don't, you know, we don't want it to go into black hole anywhere, let's move it along.
Thank you. Dr. Webber?
A couple of things. The Lambert's Park Golf Course has a torn netting that protects the practice area. I know it's been torn in a storm, and I understand they're working on, with the insurance company, but in the interim, it's a dangerous for the golfers in that area, and that needs to be fixed. I have a lot of concerns about the condition of that golf course. I know we're voting on that today, and I understand that that's going to be a term that we work on for that, but I hope that with our investment that we made on that golf course, we make sure that whoever takes care of it does a good job. Secondly.
No excuse for the screen, I mean, it's been, it's been down for, I mean, Mr. Reddicks has a long time, I mean, it is a, it has been a long time. Okay, I mean, there's just no excuse.
Secondly, the Larchmont Civic League met last week and had two issues, one which was not on the agenda, which was the concerns about Old Dominion's plans for expansion. So, I think we need to have a heads-up on that. They agreed to table their resolution to ask for a impact study on crime and traffic and housing values from the expansion on Old Dominion, of Old Dominion. They're going to have a emergency meeting probably in late July or August, and it would be well for us to have staff there, because this is going to come back to us in a short time. The other agenda item was Larchmont School, and there's a lot of work to be done on this plan. I could say that pretty much universally, everybody at the meeting was not happy with what has been done thus far. And that included people that wanted to renovate and those people that were okay with a new building. One question that has come up, as you know, the proposed site would put the practice fields on Hampton Boulevard, so people are questioning the need for fencing and how tall that would have to be. I just saw Darryl outside in the parking lot, he said that would be ten to eight to 10 feet minimum on Hampton Boulevard to keep balls from going out into Hampton and causing issues for traffic. That's just one of many, many, many issues that are brought up. People are confused about how this plan has come out, they're confused about where we're going next. I think we need to take a step back here and recognize that for the same reason that the community was in arms about Maury High School, and the school board maybe tried to go ahead with the plan before involving the community. I think we've done this backwards. We should have first started with the community, and then put out an RFP on what we wanted to see, and what was going to be important to the community. I don't know how you go from that, but people were very upset about the process that's has been started with this school, and confused by Peter Franklin.
Dr. Webber, what we had planned to do is come back to the council in the eighth and give everybody an update on where we are, including the community input. My understanding is, many of the issues that have been brought up by the community have now been incorporated into.
That is from the community forums, that was not from the Civic League, and there were no representatives from that, nor anybody from the city of this. The community, just as an example, the community questionnaire that went out never brought up the idea of maintaining any part of the building, nor any questions about the site. There was no part of the questionnaire that included that. That's all.
Yeah, well, my last supper was delicious, and now I'm, on my way out, on my way out, I'm going to be barking for libidinous, I'm just kidding, I have things to do. But, in case of, in the interest of time, I don't know if I'll get a chance to say anything in the fall, I mean, I want to thank all of you again for this historic appointment, and it was historic mainly because you had three women serving on Norfolk City Council. So, thank you.
The thanks goes to you.
Thanks. Thank you.
We should, that's not.
We'll have three.
Yeah, but that was, yeah, but that was the first thought.
Thank you. Look, I just want to, and this is not a direct reply to what Terry has said, but the manager of the administration, I think, acted appropriately in scheduling these various community forums to discuss, you know, the, the new schools. If people choose to gather in other places other than forums where the staff and the people can answer, the developers, I mean, the people who are going to build these things can answer questions, I don't doubt that they're confused, but, I mean, I don't know that we can be at every meeting, especially when we're not invited, to try to respond to this stuff. There are, if people want to pick and choose where they are, you know, I, we can't help that, but I mean, I'm, I'm glad to go to the, to the Larchmont Civic League meetings and try to discuss how we got to where we are, and I think it's been a very open and appropriate process, so.
We did have representatives, the school board was there, and a woman that is on the PPEA, whatever the committee is, Dr., I don't know, I'm sorry, can't remember her name, but she was there to, to speak about the process.
Okay, all right, let's go. Tight extensions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I will be brief, I know we have a robust agenda, but first of all, I'd just like to get the autograph of your city manager, I thought that was a great article in Inside Business, so if he would agree to do that. Wasn't a good joke, but it was a joke, so. Anyway, Naval Station Norfolk updating you on where we are, many of these slides you've seen, so I'm going to clip through fairly quickly. The first slide is important, because we're talking about economic development and job retention here, and Naval Station Norfolk is clearly the largest employer, and you see the number of jobs and, and the data that's being shared here. This next slide is certainly one of significance, we believe, because as we've shared before, and we're going to talk a bit about how transit is funded in Hampton Roads, but clearly, the issue here is that 23% of those headed to Naval Station Norfolk are Virginia Beach residents, followed by those within your geographic boundaries, and the city of Chesapeake, 12%. But, I think of significant note is the fact that over one-quarter of employees live outside of the region, so this clearly is a major employer and one of great significance. Consistent with your Plan Norfolk 23 Long Range Transportation Initiatives, we are looking at those major corridors that you've identified, and clearly, the extension of the light rail system is certainly part of your overall economic development strategy. We, as you know, are involved in local corridor planning here, it's a corridor planning level information, and we've been working on steps one and two, defining the purpose and need, as well as a broad range of alternatives. We have now moved into phase three, where we are beginning to, to get significant feedback from your staff, and certainly want to hear from the council, to make sure we're on track relative to what we're looking at, at this point. We were very strong, as we indicated to you, relative to stakeholder feedback, I know that's critical to, to the way we need to do business. We increased the number of, of public workshops at your request, and I really want to thank my team, Julie Timm and Ray Almaruso, they worked very hard at each of these meetings, along with our consultants, and certainly, your staff was a part of those discussions. Bob Batchory actually facilitated some of those sessions, and we had great feedback, over 500 participants. We also met with the city's task force meetings, we've met with the Navy and a number of stakeholders, which we've listed here. Drilling down on purpose and need, you see listed some of the major interests of what the public said to us, but we also heard, you know, some people want to get to Naval Station Norfolk pretty quickly, so, you know, to, to begin to foreshadow what may come forward from this particular study, is perhaps two solutions. One, to get you there, perhaps through the eastern corridor more quickly, and then perhaps there's another solution that addresses what many were interested in, which are the many points of interest in the city that people want to, to visit. As we've mentioned, there are several points along the corridor where there's a lot of interest, obvious Old Dominion University, they're concerned about their growth plan, and the fact that they feel the transit really needs to be part of any comprehensive solution relative to their future. Of course, the airport, the Ghent community, and two shopping areas, Ward's Corner and Janif. Now, these were the primary corridors, were identified by the public process, the western corridor, the central, and eastern, and again, it really ties back to your Plan Norfolk. Now, from this list, routes have been excluded, because this was just, you know, everyone envisioning what might be a great corridor. The step that we're in now, step three, we're looking at fatal flaws, what are the engineering requirements? Are there environmental impacts that would negatively impact the, the continuity of these communities? So, we have now moved to, to this list of colors here, and I think there's 13 particular segments here, all the way from the east, which represents Military Highway, all the way over to near ODU, flood wall, flood gate concept. And in terms of where we are, we want to get feedback from your staff, as well as any feedback from the council, and make sure we have not excluded any particular areas here. You'll notice in the Ghent area, I think that's peach is the color here, right in the middle, I know that I have a pointer there, but there are several sub-routes that are being looked at in that corridor, so we shaded the whole area there. So, in terms of next steps, we will work with you and your staff to really get a little deeper, to identify what corridors are really the most feasible for this potential project. And certainly, that's what's funded up until this point. When we look down at the environmental impact study, as you know, we anticipate that beginning perhaps in 2015, if we're able to secure funding. We have filed for a Tiger grant, a federal Tiger grant, my staff worked very hard on that, with support from your folks as well, a $3 million grant. In addition to that, we're very pleased that in the six-year plan that was approved by the Commonwealth Transportation Board, the state has allocated 4.4 million for the DEIS, but there is that anticipation that $3 million will come from the feds through that Tiger grant, so we'll have to monitor that very carefully, and I think we'll hear about that.
August 31st.
August 31st, so we'll know pretty soon. There was a small local match of $300,000, so we'll be getting back in touch in that regard. Just looking way out, in terms of eventually, construction operations, maintenance, we're just saying beyond 2020 at this point, until you really allocate the funding for the DEIS and all of these subsequent steps, this is really just an educated guess at this point. One of the things we think is very clear, and I just wanted to take a, a moment to mention what I believe to be the most significant project Hampton Roads Transit has ever undertaken. As you know, and perhaps painfully so, we currently have a cost allocation agreement where cities each year purchase as much transit as they can, and as a former city manager, I understand the fiscal stress that all of the cities are under, but the challenge is, based on the way we're currently funded, because this particular project is 100% within the boundaries of the city of Norfolk, based on the current configuration, that would be a requirement for Norfolk to pick up the cost of that. That's just not a reasonable way to do business, as we have done best management, practice, review throughout the nation, and we've looked at transit systems throughout the world, we have found a structural deficiency. The fact that we have a fixed gateway system, and we don't have a level of dedicated funding. So, with that in mind, we have initiated this project called Connect Hampton Roads, and we want to work with each of the member cities, we're working with Williamsburg, as well as Suffolk, who are no longer part of Hampton Roads Transit. This is about providing the appropriate level of resource to transit throughout the region. We believe that there will be three critical elements of that. The first is, on Thursday at our board meeting, we intend to initiate a website called connecthamptonroads.com. We're encouraging every citizen, we want over 50,000 people to go on that site, and really give us your preferences in terms of the type of transit system that you'd like to see, whether it's later night service, more comprehensive service, and from that, we intend to finish that survey by September 30th. We want to move into plan development, where Ray Almaruso and his team, all of which have been consultants before joining HRT, are going to pull together the plan. What would that look like? What does the public want, as Dr. Wimbley said, from the stakeholders, developing a responsible plan? And then the third element will be advancing funding proposals, so that we can get that kind of system funded. We certainly intend to work with the private sector, mobility matters, and other members of the business community, and what I'd like to do, if possible, is to just show a one-minute and 50-second video, which summarizes the challenge.
Out of 42 regions nationwide, with over 1 million residents, Hampton Roads ranks 40th in public transportation. In the past, communities throughout coastal Virginia were connected by ferry, streetcars, bus, and rail systems. Today, Hampton Roads is a vibrant and bustling region of over 1.6 million residents. Researchers estimate the region's population will exceed 2 million within the next two decades. With growth in the economy, and the number of residents and visitors that are part of our region's promising future, we also have real challenges to connecting the people and places of Hampton Roads. Traffic ingestion and the lack of transportation choices other than driving is a real threat to achieving a diverse and robust economy, and keep Hampton Roads from effectively supporting our existing businesses and military communities, and attracting new businesses to grow the regional economy. Now more than ever, we need a multifaceted transportation network to meet the growing needs of businesses, residents, and visitors. Connect Hampton Roads is an effort to get public input on a new regional plan that includes all types of transportation options, such as light rail, express bus, bus rapid transit, bike and pedestrian pathways, and new park and ride options. We need your help to shape the plan. Let's connect Hampton Roads.
We want to work very closely with your public communications staff, we also want to be able to share this information and push that out to your neighborhood groups. What we've found, as we've lobbied at the General Assembly, is the current feeling is that, you know, I don't believe there's a clear understanding of the economic value that transit brings to a region. So, we believe if we can build a grassroots effort, so it's not just Hampton Roads Transit and Williamsburg area transit pushing for dedicated funding, it's a community that wants a viable system. So, that's what it's all about, and we want to work very closely with you. So, that concludes our presentation.
Mr. Harold, did you see the editorial in the Daily Press, maybe 10 days ago, written by the head of the Fairfax County Economic Development Authority?
Yes, I did.
Talked about Norfolk and Fairfax County having the only, you know, really rail systems in the, in the Commonwealth, and what it had meant to us. It was a great editorial, I think I've got one in the office, maybe I can get, did you see it?
Yes, yes, I did.
It was a great, a great piece?
Yeah, we need to certainly have a board.
Yeah, I haven't picked up on that. But it's, it's not too early to start talking about how you would drop, once you get to the base, how you would drop down Hampton Boulevard to where the I-564 intermodal connector is, reaches the border, which then, you know, is the first phase of the third crossing, because one of the great attractions of the third crossing is it provides for the fact that, you know, a tube could be designed to accommodate light rail, could never do heavy rail, but it could take light rail, and we always thought about, you know, I mean, there's money to get that part of that, that piece done, and to get the Patriots Crossing, the second phase, done. And then you get the, you get it over to the peninsula, you go up the CSX corridor to Williamsburg, and then you have a system that could run theoretically from Williamsburg under the, down the CSX corridor, under the harbor, pop up there by NIT, just north of NIT, and then either go around, you know, and then take the next, you know, however you want to get out to the new town, right, to the beach from there, and then go to beach. That's, that's, that's been the prize. But it's not too early to start thinking how you might drop it down there, so. That also would lend some momentum to the fact that we did, that we can, that we should build it.
Absolutely, and that's precisely the kind of feedback that we're interested in, to, to help build this plan.
Mr. Almaruso, did you want to?
I have to summarize what I've got. We already have, Chesapeake has already said that they're willing to look at light rail, they don't want to be off the funding track, off of what you have shown us, the west, the east, and the central. Have you looked, or I think, move it this way, you should perhaps consider the expansion into Chesapeake, as to which of those west, central, or eastern tracks ties in with the city of Chesapeake? And that way, perhaps this is all not our internal city of Norfolk issue or burden, as somebody just said, but in reality, it becomes more of a regional burden. So, I know that you've been in discussions with them, you must have, so I think anything that you consider within the city of Norfolk really should consider Chesapeake at the same time. I think if you don't consider them at the same time, then we're missing the boat on where we're going with this. And I think, you know, I understand what Paul's saying, but you've already got a locality ready to, to examine this and feel that they're, they don't get left out. Well, if we're already down the path of light rail, down the track, and they're already looking to get down the track, then whatever we do in Norfolk should be with them in mind. So, if, so even though the western track looks terrific, if it's not in mind with Chesapeake, in my book, the western track doesn't happen, then the central track is the one that occurs, or the eastern track is the one that occurs. So, whatever the decisions are, I would strongly consider that you look to Chesapeake also. Don't just look at what's best for Norfolk, look at what's best for the region also.
And that's really why we're trying to look at revamping our system, because the challenge we currently have is each city independently looks at what corridors of interest, and that final decision is made by the city councils in those cities. So, the regional coordination piece, I mean, we certainly try to do that in terms of discussing, encouraging, but right now, based on the current configuration, that decision is an independent decision made by each city. So, that, again, creates a challenge for having a good regional system and good regional planning for the system.
Right, but it shouldn't be that way.
Absolutely, right.
So, I'm saying that whatever you come up with, our decision should not be based solely on what Norfolk wants to do, it should be based on what's best for both cities. So, that may be how it works, but the decision should be, perhaps, we need to sit down with Chesapeake City Council. Chesapeake City Council. Once they've been briefed, we sit down together, we look at what the pathway is that works best for them, and then we decide what works best for the region, not just for what's within the city of Norfolk. Because frankly, as I've said before, we're merely the driveway for, you know, many of the people that live in other jurisdictions. And I think that as we move along, Chesapeake and Norfolk are going to become closer and closer. So that being said, I don't really think we should work, I don't think we should look at it with that model that has been in the past.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Something, yeah. Mr. Harold, a couple of things. One has nothing to do with light rail. Has anybody ever approached you or mentioned the possibility of eliminating the HOV lanes and using that for light rail? And if so, I'm wondering if that, if those arteries would have enough to be able to bear that weight? I don't guess anybody's ever made that.
I'm going to have to yield to Mr. Amoruso. He's also our historian.
Years ago, in the mid 2000s, there was a request to look at the conversion of the HOV lanes to hot lanes, which was a different purpose. The federal highway administration weighed in very heavily about the use of money that was given to those lanes to build HOV lanes. And it was set aside because the emphasis was that you would have to reimburse the federal government for what they put into it. But light rail, we looked at it very early in the planning stages of the original Norfolk to Virginia Beach, if you talk about 264 and HOV lanes. We looked at it back then, it's a possibility, the pavement surface of 264 is concrete, although it's taking a beating over the 10 to 12 years we last looked at it. Of course, it's a different kind of system then, because once you're locked into the HOV lane, it's a limited stop. So in other words, it's going to convey somebody from one end to the other instead of a local purpose, multidestination. But it's a possibility, it hasn't been looked at recently in a very long time.
I'm just wondering. And this has nothing to do with light rail. I meant to bring it up on our council concerns, and that's a couple of bus shelters. I think I might have mentioned it to you, Ray, a couple of months ago, one at the corner of Norchester and Corporal, and Virginia Beach Boulevard, and, and Norchester. Their two senior citizens facilities, their grace place in another lane. I had another call yesterday. And so I know that those shelters are limited, but since I have you here, just thought I'd refresh.
Our next round of grant money should be coming through this summer from the feds, $800,000 for shelters. We're waiting for the next round of federal grant money. We had one discretionary grant two years ago. Now, the $800,000 will be spread around all six cities, but Norfolk, we have a list working with your staff of the party locations, and we'll make sure that that is reflected on the list. And I have it down already, so I know those.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
That's it. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Harold. Thank you. Do you think somebody could try to pull that article off the Daily Press? It was an editorial. It's about two weeks old, it's on light rail, it was a guest editorial.
Okay. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Manager. I'm here tonight to give a presentation on firearms-related crime in our response with the Norfolk Police Department. First, we'll begin with some statistics. You can see from these, this is citywide firearm-related offenses. Numbers are self-explanatory, we are in total violent crime relating to firearms, we're down 10% year-to-date, or compared to last year. Violent crime altogether involving firearms is down 10%. Violent crime altogether is down 13%. This is a five-year trend since 2009, looking at total violent crime, firearms-related offenses. You can see a steady downward trend. The 182 number for 2014 is year-to-date. So shooting incidents from January 1st to June 22nd of this year are slightly down Shooting victims, looking at the number of persons struck by gunfire, we see an increase of four. This year, we've had several incidents where two or more persons were injured by gunfire. This is where we're concentrating a lot of our efforts. This year, we are significantly up in the number of multiple victim incidents. We've had 12 as opposed to years past. Most of these have been related to the after-hours, open-house-type parties, and we are putting together strategies to take a look and try to combat this. Moving into our reduction strategies. Most of you know that we use CompStat process to track our crime data and to assist us in deployment. This is bi-monthly data that we use to generate density or hotspot maps, and then we use these to do enforcement sweeps. Included in these are trying to arrest fugitives, we bring probation or parole with us, we use our bike unit extensively in these, we also have vice narcotics investigators with us, we also bring codes enforcement folks in to look at disorder issues that may be contributing to some of these. Specific to guns, we cooperate with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and their office prosecutes all misdemeanor offenses involving firearms. We are also working with the Office of the Attorney General, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, on a grant under Project Safe Neighborhoods. If we're awarded this grant, it will provide money for a staff position for guns and gang prosecution through the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and also will provide some overtime funding for us to be able to deploy more fully in some of the affected neighborhoods. We're still in process for this. I'll hopefully be able to give you a status update once we're done. Some of the investigative strategies we're going to deploy, we are merging our criminal intelligence unit with our crime analysis unit. We're also changing some sworn positions to civilian positions. What this will do is allow for some longevity in the crime analysis unit. You know, one of the things we do in the police department is we rotate people through different jobs so they get a well-rounded career. By changing this to a entirely civilian unit, these folks will be able to build some expertise in this area, and become experts in doing crime analysis and doing all the things we need to take a look at what's going on in the city in order to help us develop some strategies.
Mike, can you be a little bit specific, so I, I, that was, to me, that was almost police, for me. Give me an example. When you say combine criminal intelligence unit with crime analysis unit, and I understand you, what you just said, you're making civilians, but what are they looking at? What does the criminal intelligence unit look at? What does the crime analysis unit look at? And if you're making that combination, how will that play out into the, into the future?
What we're doing, crime analysis looks at raw data. They look at the numbers, what's going on, trying to identify trends.
That's the CompStat.
That's part of what they do in CompStat. They also, beyond CompStat, give us crime alerts on where they see patterns developing. The criminal intelligence unit does what intelligence units do, they gather intelligence on, you know, people who may be acting on these types of crimes, you know, they, they look at our social media pages, they try to develop.
About gangs, where do they?
They look at, they look at that. We have a gang unit as well that looks at that type of stuff. We collect lots of that. So we're hoping that by putting the raw data folks that look at trends with the folks who develop intelligence, that there's some gain in there, that we can start identifying these things before they take place in order for us to be able to better address them. An example of this, earlier in the year, we identified lots of car larcenies taking place in an area. We then went to the intelligence unit, and we looked at some of the suspects, folks that they had developed that had shown propensity for this type of behavior in the past, and by combining those two, that information, we were able to actually just send investigators out to those folks and knock on the door, let them know, hey, you know, we're seeing a pattern in this, just want to let you know we're here, and hopefully that results in some, some reductions, because they know that we're looking. We're looking to expand that also to violent crime. In other words, if we get a violent crime taking place, a victim, we look to debrief that victim, find out, you know, known associates, things like that, in an effort to figure out where the next one's going to happen. And by combining those two functions, we think we're going to get a lot of utility out of that by being able to pre-identify what's going on and hopefully prevent some things from happening in the first place.
Well, and I appreciate exactly what you've just said, because that's really why I think I had asked for this to begin with. And doing that, you are, you're taking exactly what I see on the backside of a dispute between two 17-year-olds. And the next thing you know, a disrespect issue becomes either a homicide or a violent crime with a firearm. And if that's how we're going to do it, either monitoring, as you said, the Facebook, if I could also add this, and you didn't mention the schools, but your school resource officers who are the interface with the students at the different schools, who are really the foot soldiers that see and hear would be as just an offer, I think, when it comes to your criminal intelligence unit, to provide the information that that unit needs as to, or what they may know is happening amongst two students, three students, or a gang within that group, may be appropriate. So you've pegged one of the areas that had troubled me, just because I, I live it and see it, so I appreciate that. And thank you for being, for being more specific about it, so I can understand where all of this comes in.
Sure.
Chief, when you say 546 firearms recovered in 2013?
Yes, sir.
When you say recovered, what does that, does that mean?
There's any number of things. We've taken them off of suspects, we found them in crime scenes, you know, those are, you know, just any number of ways those firearms come to us, and we recover those on an all too regular basis. You can see, you know, we participate in the National Ingraded Ballistic Information Network. Every firearm that we get is sent to a federal data clearinghouse that checks these guns to make sure they haven't been used in other crimes around the nation. So we participate fully in that, you know, turning all the ballistic information from the firearms so that we can be a part of that, to make sure we're not collecting guns that have been used in other crimes. Top of the, we've got our federal agency partnerships, we have quite a few. The first one is a task force we participate in with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives. People are pretty well aware of what BATFE investigates. The goal of task force is to, as it says on the slide, to reduce risk to public safety caused by criminal possession and use of firearms. This task force specifically targets gun crimes and weapon violations, and we have one full-time investigator assigned to that task force. This is some statistics from that task force. These are cases that are adopted for federal prosecution. You can see the years that we have, 2011, nine individuals with an average sentence of 109 months. 2012, there were 11 individuals with an average sentence of 94 months. We do not have sentencing data yet on 2013 and 2014, most of those cases are still being The task force officer reviews all of our firearm-related arrests, and they are evaluated for suitability for federal prosecution. Cases are submitted to the US Attorney, and the US Attorney determines which ones they're going to adopt. I will tell you that we submit many more cases than end up being adopted by the US Attorney, and the ones that aren't adopted, we try in state court. This year, we've had six, as it says on the slide, last year, 10. This is a task force that we've just recently, less than a year ago, gotten involved in. This is the Capital Area Regional Fugitive Task Force with the United States Marshal Service. This has been a very beneficial task force for us to be involved in. We've gotten a lot of return on our investment for having a full-time officer over there. They target fugitives wanted for violent crime, they provide access to manpower and resources in an effort to apprehend quickly fugitives, especially violent fugitives. We get access to a lot of technology that we don't have on the police department that they have at the federal level to assist us in this. In 2013, we arrested 158 violent felons through this task force. In 2014, we've arrested 69 year-to-date. The idea behind this is, is a quick apprehension of a violent felon gives them less time on the street to commit more acts. So we work this very hard, and, you know, this is actually a regional effort. It's not just us, it's the other, the other area cities and police departments that are participating as well. We also participate in the Tidewater Violent Crimes Task Force, and this is through the FBI. We had two investigators assigned, we have just signed an MOU, one of those investigators will now become a full-time person. So we are hoping to get a lot of return on our investment for that as well. So we'll still have one part-time and one full-time investigator assigned to this task force. We have several ongoing investigations relevant to Norfolk and the neighboring cities. One of the other things we've been doing is I've been meeting with the chiefs in the other cities, primarily Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Suffolk, Hampton, Newport News, the seven larger cities in our area, and we've been talking about how, you know, we look at attacking us regionally, because as we all know, there's really no boundary to this type of behavior. We, we want to make sure that we're pulling resources in from everybody, and then using our ability to try to pull federal resources to us through these task forces to get them to address the issues that are going on in each of our jurisdictions.
Mike, if you, just to let you know, Newport News has been very successful in moving cases out of state court into federal court for gang violence. And they're not seeking death, but they are easier to prosecute because of the way the conspiracy statutes are set up. I don't think we've done that in Norfolk, even though I think the gangs are getting younger. But that's a, if you could look into that, I think, I know that I've had at least two cases in the last two years that were significant federal cases with multiple individuals that were transferred from state court to federal court. We've not done it here, the beach hasn't done it, Norfolk hasn't done it. It may be on the Commonwealth Attorney to get that done, but I would make that a, when I look at violent street gangs, they don't necessarily, the level of violence doesn't necessarily have to be murder, because much of the level of violence is, the street gang doesn't want to commit murder, because they know where that's going to put them in the grand scheme of going to jail. Many of the times, I hate to say it, they're shooting for feet and legs, and they know that. And that being said, you know, it may not put us in the federal standpoint, but I do believe that your discussion needs to occur with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And I know that they are focusing on various gangs within the city that should be transferred, or at least the evidence begin to be put together, to go to the federal system. One, for easier prosecutions, longer sentences, that we can't do. So if you could please do that, because we just haven't done it. And it's not PD's fault necessarily, it may be a disconnect over on the prosecutor's side. And then being able to put that information together, it's happening in Newport News, and I know that we can do it here.
We will certainly take a look at that. Hopefully by putting the full-time investigator with that violent crimes task force, we'll get a good return.
Well, I think the last time we saw was the bounty hunter of lives.
Right.
And that was, now that's several years old.
Yes.
And I know that we've had other issues since then, and we haven't done that. That really was prosecuted from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, that really went over to the US Attorney's Office, but there has to be some, we've got to make that connection. And, and I can talk to their office also. I think they're very amenable to doing that and getting in touch with you on that.
That's all I have, unless there are any questions. More questions?
I think, I'm sorry.
You want to go?
Go ahead. I think you need a school component, and I don't, I'm more than the resource officer I talked about. I really think that you need to have, there's got to be some way to get some grant money. And the school component needs to be, get in the middle school or younger. I wish Tommy was here, because I really, again, I see it on the backside of 17-year-olds, 18-year-olds. And it really has to be with understanding that you don't solve a disrespect issue. You don't solve a, a, an argument, that you're talking about Facebook, and, which I think is brilliant, and I appreciate that, but they need to know upfront that that is not solved with a weapon, because they need to understand what happens with that weapon, that they don't necessarily remain as juveniles, they can be prosecuted as adults. But there has to be some way to communicate that to NPS, and have NPS with Norfolk PD come up with a video that is played in the school system, that the young people understand the ramifications of if they decide to cure a fight with a firearm. a fight with a firearm.
We can certainly look at that. Absolutely.
I'm sorry, Paul.
That's okay. I just had two things, Chief. Under the statistics that you gave us, do these figures include police shootings?
The overall statistics do. The citywide firearms-related offenses do not, as we were looking at a different subject matter for that. But our year-to-date stats, overall, we have twenty-one homicides for 2014 compared to fifteen for 2013, and those do include the three officer-involved shootings.
Okay. And how do we classify the deaths at the hands of a police officer?
They are homicides until the Commonwealth Attorney makes a ruling.
Okay. And then another thing I saw appear that probably doesn't make a difference anybody in the world but me, and it's a matter of semantics. On the last slide, alien smuggling, you know, to me, it's undocumented, undocumented. But I think of alien, I think of ET. And I put that akin to when we had the hurricane in, in New Orleans, and they referred to the individuals that had to leave because of Katrina's refugees. And so, like I said, it's a matter of semantics, but I don't think that looks good. We can find a way to change that. They're trying to change the name of Redskins, and then we need to, you know, question about that.
That's right.
Sorry, Bernard.
Do you have a Task Force that works with the military police to prevent or investigate crimes? Like I saw a piece today about car dealership, they had been overcharging the military personnel for cars and things. Is there a Task Force running off of police that works with, or a committee or something with the military police since we have the world's largest naval base here?
Not at this time, ma'am, but we do have a whole section devoted to economic crimes that if we see something that violates city or state code, that we can, we can act on that type of information if we need it.
That's also something that the Attorney General's Office can also step in when it comes to economic crimes. All right, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was a good job.
Okay, I think Angela's on her way.
All right, Mayor, Council, very briefly, give you an overview about an ordinance that you will have before you in a couple of weeks. This did come to us at the request of Virginia Port Authority, and I'll touch on the highlights of the reason for the request. Essentially, the background on it is that it provides potential for both an environmental and economic benefit to the city as a result of providing operational improvements at the port. The port is, is, is receiving container volume that is pre-recession levels. It's driven, one, by the recovery in the economy, but, two, a lot of what the shift that we talk about when we talk about the Panama Canal is actually already occurring. And that has to do with the labor situation with the longshoremen on the West Coast. Number-one trading partner for the port of Virginia is China, both in volume of containers, tons, and also in the value of the cargo. So, the port is starting to already, starting to experience some congestion. What they are predominantly seeing that in is the number of trucks per day that they serve. Over a thousand trucks per day. Where the city of Norfolk comes into play is the fact that we have the truck restriction on Hampton Boulevard, that the trucks can only travel on Hampton Boulevard from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Their gate times in order to, in order to alleviate the congestion on, on the terminal are longer than those times. Currently, they're, they're running from 6:00 a.m. outwards of 7:00 p.m., and some, some nights, they have run to, to 8:00 p.m. When Hampton Boulevard is restricted for the movement between APM terminals in Portsmouth and NIT here in Norfolk, then that means a reroute has to happen, which then plays into more distance for that alternative route, but also the fact that you, that you have more cost of doing business. They came to us and requested an extension on the time, initially with extending the time earlier in the morning. But when we talked about them, about what are the real operational issues and what, what is the goal here? The goal is to essentially try to alleviate what we have right now, which is a spike in the middle of the day, and do a smoothing. And so, in discussions with them and analysis, what we're recommending is that we extend the hours, not in the, not in the morning by moving it up to 5:00 a.m. or earlier as a request, but to move it out in the evening to allow for that smoothing, and also allow for the afternoon peak travel time for the commuter traffic in the evening. To get beyond that, that you still can have gate times that keep their gate, gate towns, but the restrictions would be lifted so that the flow of cargo is aligned with their gate times. And what we, what we know from their modeling and our analysis of it is that we would see these levels in the middle of the day, and particularly around the four, four o'clock, five o'clock time, when we, when we're seeing them trying to get off of Hampton Boulevard and through the Midtown Tunnel to start to smooth out. This will also give them operational efficiencies going out as they do start to pick up with the, with the post-Panamax traffic that they would pick up. So, that ordinance, again, what it would do is change the time from 6:00 a.m. 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.
In other words, it's on the back end, it's only, it's an extension of what they've requested. John Reinhart, as he came in to become the new head of the Port Authority, has examined all of the operations of the port. And what's, and he's talked to the manager, he's talked to me, about what they're doing is actually trying to force as many of these containers out before the four o'clock hour as possible. And as, one of the unintended consequences is that between, now that Old Dominion has all their students there, I mean, once they come back in September, but there is an inordinate number of trucks on Hampton Boulevard between the two, three, and four o'clock hours, you know? And that is when the biggest log jams occur there. And it would actually assist the flow of traffic to allow them to, to even out, stretch out the number of trucks that are coming through. And so, what's causing a big backup on Hampton Boulevard now, we think, would be eased by allowing them to work a little longer. They wouldn't have to force everything out by four o'clock. We wouldn't have all these trucks out there at three and four, which is when all the, all Dominion students are trying to go home as well. And so, I think it's a very reasonable request of the port. Actually, I would like to, I hope we could have had it on the agenda for tonight to vote on, but we, but we didn't get there. But it just is, and this also helps the truckers as well. And Barclay, I've talked to him about it. He suggested maybe putting a sunset on this. If we, you know, maybe try it for six months, and then if we find that it's, that's not what is happening, that, you know, then we can tell the port that, look, you know, it's, it's not evening, evening out the flow. But I expect that it certainly will. And as Ron says, environmentally, you don't have as many trucks sitting in place in, in traffic jams on Hampton Boulevard for a long period of time.
What was the initial, let me, when was the time restrictions, when were they put on? Do we know?
Several years ago, Andy. We had a lot of discussion about the west side of Norfolk couldn't get out of the day. It's still not great.
Right.
It's much better because the toll on the tunnel has people long ways out of their way to avoid a seventy-five dollar toll.
So, I know, so it was before the last four years?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There was a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion. It didn't, it wasn't arrived at lightly.
Right.
If citizens were involved, Terry, I think you would.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is maybe changing it. Right now, I'm not educated enough to say yes or no. I understand where we're all coming from, and Marcus was kind enough to give me a briefing on it on the phone. But it really may be something that you want to get more feedback on. I mean, if you, if you had to, if it was such at a time that you had the restrictions when they were put on, there was a lot of neighborhood discussion.
Perhaps.
It may be something that you want to run back through.
Well, I don't.
Unless there's some really tight restriction, you know, to, that we have to do it now.
Well, it also supports the economy of the port, Terry.
I frankly, Andy, was the one that was most adamant about this change, when we did probably about six years ago, shortly after I got it on council. And it was, was to alleviate the rush hour traffic so that we didn't have trucks also idling. But it also, very frankly, was the hope that we would, in fact, have trucks going around in another direction to take the burden that Hampton Boulevard bears. So, when Paul first brought this up for me, and he was saying, just smooth out the numbers of trucks, that was not as concerning. I'm hearing you say, we've got trucks that are going around because of this. This would enable them now to go down Hampton Boulevard. I mean, this was our concern. This road takes an inordinate amount of burden by these trucks. And I'm not hearing the ports saying, we're going to renew, reiterate you for the wear and tear that we have on this road, to say nothing of the wear and tear on these homes. So, I, you know, I think Andy's right. We can't just willy-nilly. Now, I think Barclay has got a point, too, but we've got to look at this. If we can keep the numbers the same, the same amount of trucks and smooth them out, meaning there, there's not a log jam, I'm okay with that. If the goal of the port is once again to put more trucks on Hampton Boulevard and have us bear that burden without some kind of give and take here, I'm not going to be in favor.
The goal is congestion relief on Hampton Boulevard.
But what did you tell me when you said trucks are going around?
That if they're outside of the time, which you see here.
Right.
There are truck arrivals that are.
So, if they're outside, now if they're, have the ability up till seven o'clock, then those people that go outside, go around, are now going to come down Hampton, right?
They could. It depends on where they're coming from or, or the driver. Some drivers prefer to do morning deliveries, which is actually common in their industry. But the two studies we had over the past twelve years yielded very close to each other, that the overall truck, traffic was five percent on all traffic on Hampton Boulevard. And that's all trucks.
Right. But that wasn't by week.
This was a long drawn, we had statistic, and you talk about studying and input, and I agree with you, Andy, except that the only way you're going to really tell is to give it a test trial. That's why I said the only way I would support it was a six-month sunset. And if they're not, in fact, and if they're trying to cram everybody at it at three o'clock, it's a worse problem.
And that's when, they didn't, these log jams didn't start occurring until two, three years ago. I just attributed it to the Old Dominion growth in populations. It started around two or three. But what also is, you know, now is evident to me anyway, is if there, the trucks that they're trying to push out the gate before four o'clock are also, there are more trucks sitting out there in that three, two, three, four o'clock hour, four-thirty hour that have already left at four. So,
It hits when the shift changes.
This makes sense to me to try to smooth it out. Everything will work better. And then in six months, Terry, if we said, well, this is not working, then we can take it back.
I, you know, I do think you also need to be cognizant of the fact we have another log jam of traffic at seven with Old Dominion, too. So, it's not just four.
I think most of that stuff is, well, okay.
Yeah, because that's.
A lot of that now is.
Seven at night.
Most of that's coming up at two and three o'clock.
No, no, it's leaving Old Dominion.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's, you know, when the classes let out.
I'm just saying, maybe it's something we should, my fear is that, I know how much time, I remember reading about it in the paper, and I know how much time you all put into it when you came up with this before I came on council. I just remember it. And I, I just don't want you to be in, I don't want you all to be in a position that it's looked at, that we changed it willy-nilly when you took the time to put into it. And that's all I'm saying, Pauls.
My point is, I don't think you can statistically go through the numbers. They present numbers, we present numbers, everybody presents numbers. You're not going to solve anything. The test in my mind is going to be, let's put it on for a period of time, and be from the summer to January first, schools out, schools in, vacations out, and we evaluate it and come back here and have to prove it again if we want to continue or go back to where we were. Because you could talk it to death, but, you know, the proof is in what you see out there.
And the truckers, by the way, that's another.
Well, they got to slow down, too.
But they got to slow.
Let me tell you, they got to slow down.
They have to slow down. And I just, you know, as you know, I walk this route.
That's, that's enforcement.
And it is just unbelievable, the amount of noise that those neighbors have to take up from those trucks. And the other thing, and I know, Paul, we've talked about this before, I'm hearing that we're giving the ports something. I'm not hearing what the ports are giving us in return for the wear and tear on our streets. And if, in fact, the number of trucks is going up, then we've got more wear and tear. This is an agency we get no taxes from, and, you know, it's, I mean, I know I'm preaching to the choir here on this.
We'd hope that in the next budget, the governor's budget.
But I think that needs to be our dialogue, Mr. Reinhart.
That is, there's no quid pro quo. We don't make deals quiet like that. But if we treat them well, I would expect them to treat us well. And I would expect us, there to be something in the, in the governor's budget next cycle.
I would like to see more enforcement as well, because they're reckless and they scheme. And that's a question I asked a few weeks ago, just informally, if we could restrict them to one lane. And I don't got, I don't want to tie that to what we're talking about, but that's something I'd like to, to, you know, look at.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Jones. I'm actually surprised. I thought the cameras were here for this presentation. But since they're not, we'll go ahead and brief through this real quick. We are in hurricane season, beginning June 1st. We could see the forecast that we've been given is non-named storms, three major, I'm sorry, named hurricanes, and then one major hurricane. I can tell you from the perspective of my office, this is inconsequential because there's really no, there's nothing saying where they're going to make landfall, at what speed, and cause what impacts. We do know that it only takes one, when you look at the hurricane history that we faced all along the East Coast. So, we continue to encourage folks to have a disaster supply kit, have a plan, stay informed, and actually get involved, too. We try to really stress volunteering and really getting prepared at the neighborhood level so we can really have one community-wide approach to responding to a hurricane. The key issues that we continually face in terms of hurricane preparedness is the importance of personal preparedness. We, again, we strive to do that, preaching the word at civic groups, outreach, and we'll talk a little bit about that later on. Unity of effort, having one team, one fight, with, again, different levels of government and agencies, state and federal intentions as well, learning what the state's plan and the federal plan is going to be with those state assets and what they're going to do when they get here. How we're going to continue to communicate with the community in terms of alert notifications, as well as keeping folks informed throughout an emergency operations center activation. Sheltering issues, and we'll talk about those a little bit in more detail. Transportation-dependent populations, and then again, the volunteer management. In terms of the outreach, we did get to partner with the Tides, and I can't say enough about the Norfolk Tides organization. This is something that we've done now for the second year. This is an annual event that they're more than willing to work with us on, giving us space, tables to bring volunteers out, pass out materials, putting videos on the scoreboard from Sesame Street and the Ad Council, and working with some of our local meteorologists. Again, just getting the word out, telling folks what to do to be prepared, what the threats are, and then how they can be involved and kept informed. We're also working with the libraries to share our plans. We talked about this last time when we adopted the emergency operations and resilience framework. The plan is all well and good, but if the community doesn't know what the plan is, then we can't really expect them to make the decisions that we need them to make. So, we're working on with them to get those plans into different libraries and recreation center, with Daryl Shaw, and also to include flooding information. And we've talked about community rating system points in the past and how that gives some of our policyholders some decrease in the premiums. So, that's something that we're always striving to do, is get more CERs points so we can save the community even more money, and also our health plans as well. We've, we've briefed on what Team Norfolk is, the different organizations and agencies that are involved with that, again, at the local level all the way up to the federal, all of our partners within the community. We're all in it together. So, we have our, we have our group that meets monthly, public, private, not-for-profit, higher education, and military to develop a citywide response to all hazards, not just hurricanes. And a lot of what we're doing is capabilities-based, too. There are some things that we tweak for a scenario, but it's really, our communication is going to be the same whether it's a terrorist attack or a hurricane or whatever it is. We're really working through those capabilities, and then also planning by emergency support functions. So, ESF1 is transportation. So, we work with HRT, we work with VDOT, we work with our smart traffic center folks, and on down the line. So, we make sure that regardless of what level of government or sector you're in, if, if you have a primary mission of, say, sheltering, then we bring all those folks, military, civilian, Red Cross, all those folks together to address that, that particular piece. I'm thrilled to say that we have a few great folks from the Norfolk Emerging Leaders Program. So, when I say that we're working on capabilities-based planning, these folks are, we're looking at community resilience, public information and warning, and mass care services. So, they're going into the Department of Homeland Security's core capabilities and target capabilities, identifying what the, what the capability is that we need. Do we have it? Are there gaps? What is the speed in which we can deploy some of those things? are there gaps, what is the speed in which we can deploy some of those things? So, from that, we can really update our plans, identify what those gaps are, and then, once those gaps are identified, really start to work on pre-scripted requests, or mutual aid agreements, or grant investments, whatever it is, so we can rectify those, to make sure that we meet that standard at the federal level. Keeping folks informed, there are obviously a lot of ways that we do that. We have the Norfolk Cares Line, which in the past, we would use their number throughout the year until there was an incident, and then, once we had an EOC activation, we would change the number on folks. So, that's going to remain constant. We've been working a lot closer with Norfolk Cares, the Impact Center. NICSOL, what I have on the next slide, in terms of our alert notification process, we team up with Norfolk, oh, I'm sorry, Virginia 211 for human services information. So, not only can folks call the Norfolk Cares, Norfolk Impact Line number, they can call Virginia 211 and also get information as far as where our shelters are, distribution sites for food, tarps, whatever it is, whatever commodity it is that we're passing out.
Has 211 been eliminated?
No, sir. No, sir. Not that I'm aware of. I hope not. I've talked with George Harden, their president, in the Norfolk area recently.
I think it's eliminated.
I will follow up on that, because I know there's a memory and understanding with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management as well. So, when we do sit reps, they get them and can feed that information.
I think it's eliminated.
I will, thank you, I'll follow up on that. Norfolk Gov, as you know, turns into an emergency site, so emergency information crawling or scrolling across and just on the main site itself. Norfolk Air is an opportunity for folks ahead of the storm to determine what flood zone they're in, so they can make cognitive decisions on whether or not to evacuate. iView we use to keep folks informed of where those down trees, flooded roads, and the like are, that's available on that website. And social media, we've been using quite a bit, and the power of social media has really proven very beneficial, not just for us getting information out, but folks being able to ask information of the Emergency Operations Center. So, I know Lori and Bob's folks and others have really tapped into that, and we've been able to keep the community informed, and also use the community as force multipliers to get us information out within the community. All the radio stations, we try to promote the Know Weather Radio, specific area message encoding, so folks can program it here for this area, but also working with Norfolk State University, working on MOU with them, so folks would be able to turn to 91.1 at the top of the hour, or quarter after the hour, whatever it is, for Norfolk-specific information. So, rather than defer folks to the main media outlets, which we'll continue to do, they'll still be able to put information out, but they're putting information out for 15 or 16 other localities. So, this way, if people are dependent on battery-operated radios, we could say, look, this is the schedule, you'll get Norfolk-specific information, then you can tune it off, and then wait for the next update. Again, working with the public libraries and print media, so hopefully, we're able to see high-tech and low-tech methods to get the community informed as many ways as we can. NICSOL, you should have gotten a message for this Tuesday, I'm sorry, this Thursday at 2:00, we're going to do a test of the NICSOL Alert System. We've upgraded it, so it's not just subscription-based, we have the capability now to reach landlines, geographically-based landline messages. So, that's what this test will be. It'll tap all of the landlines, over 50,000 landlines in Norfolk, determine what the load is going to be on the system, the speed in which those messages could be put out, and then we can start to use those. And the first reason I could see using that is, again, geographically-based, we know where those most vulnerable areas are to flooding, to surge flooding. So, when there's a storm heading our way, based on the models, we'll be able to hone in on specific neighborhoods, send them alerts saying that we encourage them to evacuate or mandatory evacuation, whatever the message is, we should be able to reach them by landline and cell and other ways as well. So, again, that test is Tuesday, and you should get that message. Again, it's just very brief, letting folks know it's a test, and they won't receive anything, and if it's a landline, it's only for life safety, period. So, they won't get any messages for anything else other than life safety, but we still have the subscription part where folks can subscribe, get information throughout an incident based on whatever it is, just general public safety information. And while we're able to send messages from NICSOL to Facebook and Twitter as well, again, relying on the community through Twitter and other social media sites to give us information so we can keep each other informed throughout. I mentioned iView earlier, we continue to use Storm. I know Frazier has upgraded it some more, there's more capabilities, more realistic common operational picture, and then through that, and again, through the reporting means, by using Norfolk Impact and folks calling in, reporting different issues, we're able to capture that and provide a more common operational picture for the community on Norfolk.gov, using the iView program, where folks can see where the flooded roads are, where the down lines are, where the down trees are, any of, or all of it, it's all about keeping them more engaged and more informed. Sheltering, okay, so Camp Estella is no longer a shelter. I met with Mr. Riddick and the task force down there in the south side, and we now have Berkeley Rec Center. One of the things that you'll be asked to vote on on the consent agenda tonight is the acceptance of funds, so we can put a Quick Connect system at the Berkeley Rec Center. So, while all the different shelters that we have right now have generators, the Berkeley Rec Center does not yet, so we're able to get funds, we were able to get funds, grant funds, to put a Quick Connect, so it'll be wired and ready to go, so when a storm's coming our way, we can lease a generator, get it in place, and those folks would have emergency power as well. So, that tackles the emergency power piece, we should be set for all of the shelters that we have right now. Another piece on the consent agenda for those same funds is accessibility and special needs. We're able to get some funds to work with the Independent Center on Virginia Beach Boulevard, to take a visit to all of our shelters, to make sure that they are, in fact, accessible, taking into account the lessons learned from a court ruling up in New York, where their plans were not as inclusive for those with different special needs, access and functional needs. So, we've been partnering with the Independent Center, there's some funding available to do some assessments with them, so we're going to go through all of our shelters, look at the accessibility, but also just the square footage, making sure that we have realistic numbers, and not really packing in people in an unrealistic manner. Pet sheltering, I'm proud to say that we've doubled our capacity for pet sheltering. Last year, we had one, so now we have two. So, they're at the rec centers, they're at the city buildings, we have not been able to use the schools for pet sheltering yet, but certainly the rec centers, we can, and we'll continue to build on that capability. It's very positive, we've got a lot of positive response from the community, a lot of folks want to volunteer in pet shelters, and incidentally, a lot more folks want to volunteer in pet shelters than in new people shelters. So, we should be good, we'll continue to add into that strategy, along with the equipment that we have and the partnerships with our private sector to make sure that we have the crates, the food, the leashes, everything that we need for the pet sheltering piece. Transportation-dependent populations, again, kudos to Norfolk Public Schools, they assign a school bus and a school bus driver at every shelter, so anytime anyone calls for a need to get there, they're going to go out, pick them up, take them to the shelter, take them home afterwards. It worked really well during the last storm, during Sandy, and even before I got here for Irene, that happened as well. Again, positive response, a terrific way to take care of the folks who have no transportation, and all of these are lessons learned from Katrina, and certainly Sandy as well. While you see those six dots up there as our primary shelters, we certainly have more, and we also have some options for potential refugees of last resort. When we talk about evacuation, and a lot of folks really don't believe that the mass evacuation out of here or the counterflow is going to work, everyone going out, the HRBT, all the lane reversals and stuff like that, so from a planning perspective, we plan for the worst-case scenario, to where there will be cars backed up on the highway when HRBT has to shut down. So, identifying those refugees of last resort, and then working out the process with our Smart Traffic Center folks, with the police department, with state police, rerouting folks to where those refugees of last resort is something that we have been doing and we have a pretty good handle on. And then staffing, we're often asked, as far as however many shelters we have, and we could open up, again, 20 shelters or so, we're asked about the staffing, and usually the way I come from is, from a resilient community, is, the answer is, if we have people in a shelter, if we have able-bodied individuals in a shelter, and we've seen this through different incidents and reports, then we have staffing in shelter. We could spread out the management of the sheltering piece, but if there are able-bodied folks in the shelter, they, too, can step up, help each other out, and again, we've seen that time and time again, so that's one of our strategies, is taking that into account. So, we're going to use Bravo personnel, we're going to use the folks that are in a shelter, so staffing should never really be a problem in our shelters here in Norfolk. Volunteer management.
Jim, very quickly, because I'm going to cut you off here.
Okay.
We can come back to this.
Yes, sir.
She got something you say that you didn't say just here.
I was just going to say, people can get involved, there's free training, so we can, cert is a way that we can reach down at the community level, the neighborhood level, and keep folks informed, and then, again, use them throughout an incident. Yes, sir. Thanks.
Oh, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Gotcha. Look, we have about three people signed up to speak on Calvert-Hall. What I would like to do, we have, I think, six public hearings, I don't know that they're going to be any speakers on the first night, so maybe get them out, and real quickly, maybe there are one or two people here in the public hearing. We do have some regular agenda items here, I don't know that any of them are running any agenda. If I go up and find out there are a couple people who are just here for their regular agenda items, and I call them, and then get to the hearing, so see who's here, and I would get everybody relaxed, and have a nice night.
I would just like to ask, and tonight's not the night, but we have on this agenda the ordinance for the PCO in North Granby in the Park Place area, and I'd like to have a little more information, or maybe some kind of presentation on that. I think it sounds great, it's very exciting, but I'd love to have a little more on.